We'll call a meeting to order. A roll call, looks like we have everybody here. Any additions to the agenda?
There is one addition to the agenda, a resignation. Under personnel.
I'll make a motion to adopt agenda with the addition.
I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Approve and correct the minutes from the April 11th, 2017 regular meeting and the April 19th, 2017 special board meeting.
I do have one change to the special board meeting minutes evidently. I believe that Bruce can be there and gone at the same time.
Yeah, he's good.
So it would just be removing his name from being present at the meeting. He was not.
So he has to be there physically?
I think so. I know that he was there mentally, but...
As amended, I move to approve those minutes.
Okay, I got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Financial reports, March 2017 treasury reports, that was in your packet.
I think the only thing I would add to the board is there's now a number 11 there, which is for the sale of the school building, the adult ed building. So that is now listed and it's in a separate account. The board wanted me to keep those dollars separate, so that's where it's at. As we use those dollars, that will go down.
Are you getting any interest on it?
I'm sure a whole pile.
You didn't stock it, put it in the stock market?
I do believe we did put it into a short-term CD.
Okay.
So we'll get as much as we can, but it still will not be much.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt treasury report.
I got a motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second it from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Audit and approval of the bills. We have the additional March 2017 bills and the April 2017 bills. And I believe that Cheryl, you had the opportunity?
Yes, I did. At this time of the year, there isn't much going on and it was all pretty much normal business. I recommend that we approve the bills.
All right.
I think, just as a point, and I know that the board is aware of that, but the only thing I noticed that is a little bit out of the ordinary is that we had bought a oven for the high school that had gone out. So there was a $25,000 bill. I know Cheryl was aware of that, but I thought I would just mention it.
All right, so I got a motion from Cheryl.
I'll second.
A second from Heidi. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Consent agenda, we have one underneath the consent agenda and that would be review and consider approval of the following athletic assignments for the 2017-18 school year. And it would be for the girls head basketball coach. Phil Carlson is the individual.
The committee was put together, there was a head coach and our athletic director and our principal part of that committee and they are recommending that we hire Phil Carlson for that position.
I move that.
So I got a motion from Rick.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. We move on to the business. Review and consider approval of the five-year capital plan for the 2017-18 school year.
I'm not going to cover, the board has had this for a while, so they've certainly looked at it. If we follow this particular piece, we end up with about $170,000 in our reserve fund. I think that's continually, we brought it up slowly but surely. It does give us a little bit of wiggle room. We had a little bit more reserve carryover from last year than I thought we would. So that's kind of where we're at. Just a few highlights for this, we did finally get the net covering over the boys' playground by the stadium, or the children's playground by the stadium. So that finally has its net over there, so hopefully a much safer environment. Outdoor scoreboards, just a reminder that $5,000, we've agreed to pay $5,000 for five years, I think, for the outdoor scoreboards that we put up. That was part of our donation. The bandroom lights drawn towards the end under improvements of buildings. We're starting to change over to LED lighting as much as we can. So the bulbs themselves, just for the bandroom, were about $75 apiece. So we're just going to invest the $1,300 and put in LED lighting into the bandroom. I think you'll start to see us come forward with more capital projects that involve that. I'd like to start taking a wing at a time and start replacing them with LED lights. I just think it's what we need to do to save energy.
Is there any programs that Excel or anybody has for us to go to that?
There are, sometimes there are rebates on those. We'll certainly double check to make sure that as we purchase things, we do the rebate. So as we get ready to purchase, that's when we check with Excel because they kind of go on and off. So that could determine when we actually do the spending for that.
Okay, then I, the other thing, just to reiterate on the scoreboards and stuff like that, are they all up? Is everything up and running? Okay, all right. So I just...
Yep, I know the girls is because I saw them in softball the other day, so... Okay. Then on the backside, when we look at district-wide, we are going to put steel on the football tower piece. We're afraid that if we do not protect that, we're going to end up replacing the whole building and we don't want to do that. So we're going to, we put enough money in there to put steel on the whole tower. And also the van garage doors, where we keep our vans and stuff, they, you know, there hasn't been much work on them, so we're going to replace those and also put some controllers on them, some garage door openers. So we're going to...
So when you say the tin, is that including the roofs then too?
Yep, I believe that was, yeah.
Okay. But not on the shed?
On the shed.
On the van garage?
Or the van garage?
No, not on the van garage. The van garage, we shingled, I think, not too long ago.
Okay.
So that's going to be just the doors themselves. They're getting old and...
Well, they just put steel on the...
Or it's still on the garage? So they've just roofed that piece?
That's all done.
Yeah. So now we're replacing that. And then I think the garage is in pretty decent shape.
Yeah.
Once we get that done. Curriculum, again, we're looking at $45,000, both, you know, well, really $90,000 for that we're continuing to move our curriculum into our capital budget instead of all of our general fund. Additional cameras, we were still short after we put those last cameras in. It's about $8,000 to replace all of them that we want. We're going to do it in a two-year piece. Unless there's still a little bit of money, then, I didn't get a chance to check to see if there's a little bit of money left in our project, our facilities project. If there is, then I'll use what was left in that to help go a little bit further. But it's about $8,000 to finish off the high school and then we'll start looking more seriously at the elementary school on how we're going to update the cameras there.
So where did all the cameras go then?
They're, well, I think some of them just went into the garbage. So we moved some around, but it was really about replacing. And a lot of the cost came with the system that runs the whole piece because you have to store all that. So we're going more to, updated the cameras, though they're no longer the old analog type.
So have we gained coverage then?
Yes.
For the cameras?
Yes, and this is finishing off, when we put the cameras in and then we started looking and we found some spots that we can't see as well as we thought we would. Gets to be quite a ways down hallways. So first we wanted to try to see if we could see what we needed to see and then after having the original cameras put in, there's blind areas that we need to put additional cameras in. But after that, really we'll be in good shape for our high school, secondary building. One item that we have on there, but we're still not sure what we're going to do, the shop, would tables need to be replaced? That's $10,000. We want to still look at other options for that. And that also could play into any kind of facility project if we did one. So, but we wanted to put it on there because they are getting a little beat up. One thing I would like to...
We should have a CTE and have a velvet, fill the tables.
Yeah, there's some other ways that we could also do it. I think we're, we wanted to get it on there because we want the budget approved. If, at the same time, if it's not used or we find a better way to do it, then simply that money will be carried over for other projects. One thing I would like to change, the E-rate I had put down under district-wide, says E-rate, USAC, then it says used 10,341 last year. There's no need to have that, so I'm going to recommend that when you approve, that that's scratched out. So it would just be E-rate because that's what it is. We have one more year of E-rate funding. This is, I think about, well, I've used up all the E-rate dollars because remember, the 6,732, they pay 70%, that's our 30%. So again, we'll probably make our final technology pieces that we need to do. I know that Joan and Jim and Gary have all, have already started to look at what we want to use those dollars for. But it continues to be to upgrade our wireless in the buildings. So that's the focus. But as long as we can get somebody else to pay for 70% of our upgrades, I think we should keep spending the money. Steam cleaner, the 44,700, we don't know if we're going to do that. There's two ways. Number one, we need to make sure, because we do want to clean the outside of our building, secondary outside of the building really needs to be upgraded a little bit. We're hoping that a steam cleaner will do that, but we'll test it out beforehand. If we find out that that won't work, then we'll have to try something else. We did put some money into the 10-year plan to have somebody else professionally clean it if we need to. But again, we'll either use one or the other. We won't use both. But we're hoping that if we purchase our own, then we can do the cleaning ourselves during the summer. And let's see. Scrubber for $7,000, we're just saving one. This is the second year, so we'll be able to buy a floor scrubber for our maintenance at the end of, well, once next year's budget starts. Because we'll have saved $14,000 for that. And as mentioned, you can see on the left-hand side, it talks about estimated revenue carryover, what we're taking out of reserve, because we are kind of saving for specific projects now throughout the year. So we're taking those out and we have a reserve fund of $170,484. Remember, those are all estimates on the dollars that we'll bring in. That's all based on our student population, so that can change. Any questions on any of that? Like I said, I could go line item by line item, but that, you guys have had this for a while, so I'm assuming if you had any questions, you would be ready to ask me. If not, certainly I would go for a motion to approve it, other than making the one change to the E-rate where we'll just line item that one piece out. It's just not necessary to have on there. Any questions?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Rick. Anybody in the public? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Review and consider approval of the long-term facility maintenance 10-year expansion plan.
The long-term maintenance facility plan, we have to get approved every year, so this is for next year. The top part of it, and again, you've had this for a while, is health and safety dollars. This is, when they changed the way they did this, now the health and safety dollars are in this. And those are typical things that we've done every year and put money away. It's a guess on our part on what we'll need for the health and safety dollars. For, just a couple things to point out, high school doors, we need to replace some because of fire code. That's what the $8,000 is for. And then the $8,200, we are doing that over a few years to replace the mats that were not fireproof and don't meet code any longer. So we've just put another $8,200 in that. And then you can see, we have a little bit more for the next two years that we'll continue to replace. And then again, this goes for 10 years. Those are just guesses on the other part. They'll change and we'll, every year, we'll come back to the board with a new plan with what will actually get done for that year. Then we, I think we go all the way down to deferred capital expenditures and maintenance projects. We have $7,000 in there for cleaning the outside of the high school. That's in case our steam sprayer won't work. So if that doesn't work, then we'll have a discussion about what's the best way to have somebody come in and clean the outside of the building. We can't use our long-term facility maintenance to pay for the steamer. We checked on that because we thought we could put that in there also, but we can't. The elementary school windows, $65,000, as I mentioned, in the facilities piece, we have 120. And we figure the project's going to come in at about $185,000, so this is our other contribution to that. And then if you go down to just about the bottom, I'm going to make one more change if you would. I put down update urinals, but it's more than that. It's really updating bathrooms. So I want to have the flexibility not to, if we need to replace a urinal, we'll do that, but also to replace dividers and those types of things. They're just getting worn and they're, it's shoddy and we just need to put some money in there. So I think you're going to see this come up more than just this one year. We put $10,000 in it for this year, but it's surprisingly expensive when you look at the dividers that you have to purchase for between stalls and stuff. So, but they might paint the bathrooms, whatever. So if you would, when you approve, just, you know, bathroom updates would be what I'm looking at.
Curiously on the dividers, are they going to be more closer to the floor and closer to the ceiling or are they going to be identical?
I have not talked to Donnie about the exact ones. I think part of it is sometimes you have an option of what you want to purchase and it depends on who it's for and where it's at. I think it could be a combination of any of those things.
Bathroom issue that came up and there was a lot of conversation how you would make that take place.
Yeah, certainly we could.
And so if we talk about floor to ceiling and if you want to replace them anyway, maybe it's not that bad.
Yeah, it's, floor to ceiling would really be tough. And if we needed to do something where we're enclosing all of the areas, I think we'd really have to spend some time to take a look at how we want to do that in the most economical way. Because at that point, I think there would be a lot of, if you're going to take out walls and stuff to open up bathrooms, but then have closed in, an actual kind of a closed-in room, almost like a porta potty room, where it's just one person at a time and you close that in. I think there's a lot of things from ventilation to, you know, would we need to build it out of the material that we have or would we find something else to do it?
I think fire marshal would have, yes.
So I think we'd have discussion.
But you know that kind of pending out there? It would seem like if we spent the money right now to replace what we have to find out, we may have to change the whole thing a year or two down the road.
Yeah.
Can we wait till that? I don't know what's happened with that bill.
Yeah, I was, nothing has happened to the bill and at least, my assumption is that at least for four years, the bill will disappear to some degree. I think we can be selective on which bathrooms we use. There are some bathrooms that would very much work into more of an open piece. I mean, when I say that, not the bathrooms are going to be wide open, when I say that it'll be an open front, but each bathroom itself or stall would be self-contained and closed. I think we can be a little selective on which bathrooms we use because some bathrooms just do not work into that type of situation. So we'll look at it, but at the same time, we, I would hate for that to all shake out and leave as-is because it's time for an update. And we've had some people talk to me about it in our group, so I think, well, and you'd think $10,000 would do a lot for you. It won't when you look at dividers for those types of things, so...
Yeah, well, that's why I say I expect we're going to be extremely expensive.
Yes, so I, we'll get, we'll start the process, but I think some of the rest of it might shake out as we go down this road. And then we're also refinish the gym floor. That's not to take it down to the bare wood again. Now that we've done all the remodeling on those gym floors, in order to keep the warranty and everything else, and correct me if I'm wrong, Max, we need to kind of bring the certified company in so that they're going to wax it and go, clean it and wax it and go over that again. And I think it'll probably, we will continue to do that until we get enough wax buildup so that we're not concerned about it happening.
Well, part of that too is we were spending, Donnie would be able to give a more accurate statement on that. He's spending money on materials and the custodians are doing time on that as well. So now we're having somebody else come in and the price difference between...
What, 30 each?
The chemicals or whatever materials were used in any ways are different. And then also to do the water base instead of the oil base, which would darken everything back up as part of it. But some of that money was, we were spending as a district anyways.
Yes.
Because the elementary school was not getting done every year, the high school at the end of July, early August, when they're done using it for the summer and for the fall sports start, there's a period of time where they strip it down and refinish it and they're not in there for a period. So that part is ongoing already. It's just a different mode of doing it.
In addition, you know, we're going to be taxed a little bit too with, because when we do the windows in the elementary school, that's going to set a lot of our work back and we're going to be pretty busy this year with our custodial staff. So that'll be taken care of and when they do it, they're going to tear out all of it. We don't know yet whether they'll kind of close it in as they go or whether they'll open it all up and then close it. We're still waiting for that. Mechanical systems, we put about $10,000 aside from this year. We're going to save another $10,000, in this case $12,600, with the hope to be able to use that for HVAC type of repairs that we need to do and upgrades. You'll see as we go down the road, we're going to put a lot more money into that just because we are changing from pneumatics type of systems to electrical systems to run things so that we can monitor them right over our phone, that type of thing. So we're going to continue to do that. Then when you get down to professional services, the $9,800 is to help with, we need an architect to help us with the window piece. So they're going to do that from the RFPs to running through the project, helping us with the bidding. And then the roof system, I think we saved about $10,000 this year. We're saving another $12,000 to add to roofing projects that we do in the future. And I think you'll see us start to save more and more money for roofing projects so that when it's time for us to do a roofing project, we have the money there. The money for the 10-year long-term facility is carried over every year, anything that we have left, so that eventually we don't have to borrow money. We can just do the roofing project as we need to do it or anything else regarding the HVAC and stuff. Those are kind of the main things that we have. Any questions that you have on that? And both the five-year plan and the 10-year plan have been run through our equipment group, our facilities and equipment committee, and also our finance and budget committee. So if no questions, then I would just ask that you make the motion to approve, other than just saying updating bathrooms instead of updating urinals.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Personnel, review and consider approval of the childcare leave for Maria Growthy, teacher from August 28th, 2017 through September 15th, 2017.
I would just recommend an approval.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
I got a motion from Heidi and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Number two, review and consider approval of the resignation from Amy Roofie, three-year-old preschool readiness teacher effective at the end of the 2016-17 school year.
She just had another opportunity, so we'll be putting that back up for, to replace that position.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion from Lou and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Informational reports, activities director, Matt Dickhausen.
Well, I think on the first meeting in April, I was on a track meeting, it was a lot better day than today. I know that Matt Dickhausen spoke a little bit about a collaboration project last time of what we're doing. I just made one copy and you can certainly hand it down if you want to look at it, but this is a replica of what the power racks are going to look like in the fitness center weight room. And so if you picture when you go into the fitness center, when you walk in, the back wall to the left, Matt has done a little bit of rearranging already, but there's going to be four units like this. And you can see in our school colors, Painesville Bulldogs, there'll be four benches custom to our school as well as four lifting platforms. And so it'll be neat because our community members will still be able to use it, but also when athletes and students go in there, it's going to be much more confined instead of the equipment kind of all over. So it gets to be a little bit cumbersome and uncomfortable for some of the community members to come in there. So this project really started to get off the grounds by the $5,000 donation that we got from a student that won a bench pressing competition. And you saw that come through, the school board, and it's been in the paper. And so we used that $5,000 and then Matt Dickhausen through the fitness center avenue and stuff was able to do these things. So I'm excited about that. One neat thing, just from the safety standpoint for the kids, if you understand this at all, these bars basically are built-in spotting for them. So right now, if you go in there by yourself, you don't have anybody to spot you. And so it's, it's a pretty neat deal. Our sports teams will really benefit from the fact that we'll be able to get large groups in there without taking a massive amount of practice time to try to shuttle through. I actually had just begun conversations with Tim Weggie, who's an Albany principal, about possibility of us, while I'm looking into what it would take for us to get a robotics program going. Minnesota State High School League partners with an organization called FIRST to do that. Albany's actually, I think, this week at St. Louis for a national robotics competition. And so I can't really answer any questions about that, just more information that I'm starting to look into that. I know that we do have some students that would be interested in it and we curricular have offered some robotic stuff through the principles of engineering. This spring, we're up over 20 golfers. Our baseball, softball, and track numbers are pretty similar, but golf, we had been down around a little bit under 10 at some times and we're over 20 this spring. So we actually added some JV golf meets so that the kids can get experience and go out there and golf. Nobody wants to join and then not make the varsity team and have no chance to golf. So we wouldn't have those numbers continually. I will host a subsection track meet in May. We had a baseball tournament this past weekend, just to give you an idea, now the baseball club runs the concession stuff out there. They, from what I've heard, they made over $1,500 for a tournament. And so basically that money gets all poured back into the facilities, the kids. But the game started at 9:30 and the last game was over and they're leaving the ballpark at about 6:30. And there's a timeframe from that 9:30 until about the 3:30 or 4 o'clock time where two teams are sitting there. So we bring in those people into the community and they go out too, not just to the ballpark. I asked about the scoreboards up. They are all up and running. We had some issues with the softball one. Softball one is a wireless controller, which is fantastic. And so we hooked it up. You can sit in the dugout, you can use it. It works a lot better in the dugout than in where the current tower is right now because the chain-linked fence causes some interference for it. So when we hooked it up, tested it out, went into the, you know, dugout. Well, originally I went just right next to the scoreboard and I was doing, well, that's great reception, right? So we raised it up, we've kind of cleared some hurdles. They did send us a new one that's not battery anymore, it's just plug-in, which gave us a stronger signal. And then they also sent us an antenna and I'm just waiting for decent weather when there's not a game, which hasn't happened yet, to fix that in the scoreboard and we're hoping that will work. We're also working on getting some fall poles similar to the ones they see in the baseball stadium put up there. Something new that we started and it kind of got spearheaded by the baseball program moving to like Roscoe, Lake Henry, and Regal while the stadium was under construction is we actually play our ninth grade games at those facilities unless the varsity team is away, then obviously we use ours here. Previously, and Mark, you probably remember this, Heidi probably had kids play in the elementary school, which is great for a junior high game and is not fantastic for ninth grade. The kids are too big, it's not safe, they run out of the parking lot. It's not safe for people to park their vehicles in the parking lot and it's probably not safe for the school either with the windows in the library and stuff. So like last night, ninth grade played at Regal. These are towns, and I bring it up because we allow those teams to use the facility during the wintertime and stuff like that. They pour back into our kids. We get charged nothing to go out there and they have the field ready, it's lined, the chalk, and, I mean, they're great facilities and they love having us go out there and do that. So, that's something that we just, I don't know why we never did it in the past, but we just never did, and then, because we were going out there doing it and realized that these, they like it when we're out there, and so, we do that. Just this afternoon, I published all of the fall of two thousand and seventeen schedules online. They've been made for a while, but I just finally got that all online and published, so if you like to plan ahead, it's all there and available for you. Mark, you brought up, I just made a note here, the cameras. There is a bunch of additional coverage from the money that went into the cameras. Just for an example, there's two three-hundred-and-sixty-degree cameras in each gym. On each wall, there was zero coverage in the gym before, so now, the gymnasiums are covered by cameras. There is better coverage in the hallways. There's three-sixty cameras that will see all the entrances, as well as down the halls and stuff. There are some spots where it's just, you can see down the hallway, but you just, to be able to see exactly what's going on, or be able to tell, maybe you know who it is or what it's. So, there certainly can be some improvements, but it is way better than what it was.
And the cameras are all color cameras, so you can not only see that, but you can see, the definition is much better with the new cameras.
Yes, Bob mentioned, every new camera that was replaced is digital instead of analog. A number of them are three-sixty, so literally, I don't know, maybe sometime it would be worth it to have them, if we could talk to the tech guys, have them load the software on here, and I could show you exactly how to operate, because you can move, it's just a dome sitting in the ceiling, but I can go and I can move and look this direction, shift at that direction, zoom in. I can do that in real time, or, you know, go back in time. And another thing that was a huge issue in the past is, if you came to me and said, hey, you know, I left my backpack in the hallway on Friday, and now I can't find it, well, anybody who knows kids, sometimes they don't realize their backpack was left on Friday until Tuesday. We'd have about a two-to-three-day period of time before DVR was full of storage, and we just couldn't go back. Now, I have yet to have an incident where I couldn't go back. I think we're, you know, well over fourteen days where we can go back, and so, that's a good thing.
Do we have any coverages in the new stadium?
We do not have any outdoor cameras at this time.
That'd be, would be nice, just even in the inside where the bathroom, or not by, just to go into where that bathroom is.
I think interior would be easier, the outdoor cameras, because you have to heat those boxes and everything else.
No, I don't think, I would, I wouldn't probably suggest the outside, but I mean, the inside for, like, the concession stands, and then down by the, you know, as that door opens, going into that, and then into our areas where the kids can throw balls.
Certainly, I'm guessing that it would prob, I don't know, except I'm a technology guy, but it would entail some kind of boring to get the fiber optics to communicate from out there to in here, unless there's ways to do all that wirelessly.
Otherwise, you'd have to put a separate system in there, which, for storage and stuff, could be.
There should not be.
I'm just thinking, I mean, that's a huge investment over there, and maybe we can do it collaboratively with the association.
Certainly, something we can talk about.
I mean, I, because as we, you know, otherwise, we'd become very vulnerable to vandalism or anything that goes on in that area.
Sure.
So, it just would be something just to cover ourselves.
Yeah, from a school standpoint, we don't really own a whole lot in there. They go in there, and they can't really wreck the cement, I mean, they could wreck cement walls, but it would just be a matter of if they could get in there. But like the pitching machines and things like that that are in there, were not purchased with any school district funds. What's, obviously, we don't want to lose them.
We don't want to lose them either.
So, I understand what you're saying.
We can certainly do some checking.
Yeah, I would. I think that would be a good question.
Seeing as we're on record time, does anybody else have any questions?
I guess I have just one question, Max. You mentioned you put the schedules up for next fall. Who's responsible for keeping those up as far as scores and things like that? Each coach?
Scores where?
Well, it's, it's when you punch in and you go to schedules, you go to the Minnesota State High School League website, and every school has every sport, they have everything, the rosters are listed, and then the wins and losses. And like this winter, one team, I know, had their score in every night right after the game. The one, by the end of the season, still had half of them missing.
Yeah, so.
Some of us, that's where I go to find out what's going on.
Yeah, I should have done a better job communicating. When I put the scores, or the schedules up, they're not on the Minnesota State High School League, because, first of all, I can't do any of that until July, because the State High School League won't wipe any of that stuff clean. I can't put next fall stuff on. If you go on there, you'll see last fall's. So, and then, as far as the way the State High School League stuff works, if I go on as Painesville and enter something in with Recoree, it automatically tracks to their site, too.
Right.
So, sometimes, it's not even our people that are entering stuff, sometimes, it's other people. The best place to go for results is MinnesotaScores.net. They have everything. You can go back, you can go back and look at what the, what was our score results in two thousand and six. So, the State High School League, that site really is where they pull their information off when you make it to tournament time, and then that's when it needs to be put in there. So, we, so as far as, there used to be a time, and that was probably when the State High School League basically had all that information, and there wasn't Minnesota Scores, or there wasn't other places that do that for you, where you had to enter all of that stuff in, and then we would keep that current. So, the State High School League is not the most reliable place to go for all of that information.
So, they would have a schedule with the scores right on there, up to date?
On the MinnesotaScores.net, yes. And maybe what, what we could.
If there's one on, you'd go to WCCO, and it takes you all night to go through all those scores to find Painesville, you know.
Yeah.
Could you link it on?
Yes, that's what I'm writing down right now. Maybe what we could do is on the school website, link results, you know, MinnesotaScores dot, you can, because you can, you can go to all of those, but like wrestling, that's a bad place to go to. The guillotine is the place to go to. So, you know, there's some things that we can maybe do better in there.
Okay.
But that's a good question, and thanks for asking, because I live on that stuff all the time, so.
I mean, our St. Cloud paper, we don't always get the scores on those.
St. Cloud, you hardly ever do.
They have some bad cancelers, but they have.
Yep.
Yep, and then, in general, there, you know, but what we're telling our coaches now, because we made the change from the St. Cloud Times to the, or, I mean, from the West Central Conference to the Central Minnesota Conference, and the West Central Conference, a lot more schools were out towards the Wilmer area, and so, they would get called in for the scores. And now, for playing at Peers, typically, the home team would be responsible for sending. All of that's changing now, because almost everybody does their stats on an iPad, and so, it doesn't matter if you're the home, you don't have to call it in, you can just email it right in. So, we're, you know, and it's changing the habits of people that have been around for a while in some cases, but we're trying to get our teams just to do that if we're on the road or we're home. Because there are people, I get stopped at games, hey, you know, how come the scores aren't in? Well.
And the St. Cloud papers eliminate all of that box score stuff and everything. They just eliminate all that. Hardly have anything in there.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's good for you to ask me these questions, because this is what, I live on my computer, which is on the administrative side of the website, and I do the scheduling, so I know what's going on. This is where I get all my scores, and I just follow, you know, follow various news organizations, and so, we can do a better job of communicating where people can get that information.
Cool.
Other questions from Max?
All right.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
Okay, teachers' negotiations, pairs' negotiations, food service, and custodial.
So, the four of them, all the negotiations are actually going well. We're starting with language, and we're waiting for the state of Minnesota to come up with their budget for the school, so we're getting all the other stuff done and moving, and then, when the money comes from the state, or Bob determines what kind of money we have coming in, then we can put the rest of it together.
Yep, just at the beginning stages for all of them.
Budget and finance, kind of, we went through that already with everything that we're doing with.
Primary thing that we covered when we went through there is, we did talk about how our current budget is going, and it's kind of going the way it is, and certainly, we'll bring our update for this year's budget to the board as we start to close out this year. Certainly, something that we're looking at. And I'll be setting up another meeting with the finance committee to talk about next year, once we start. I'd like to get a little bit more information on what we have and where negotiations are going to go before we do that. We will have to have our budget approved by the end of June, one way or another, whether I get the information or not, I'll have to take my best guess. So, but we kind of covered all those. We covered the five-year plan, ten-year plan, so that's kind of what we did.
Yep.
Finance.
Okay. Any other discussion about that? Administrative meeting report, Bob.
Yep, just a few things. You know, we had the special board meeting on April nineteenth concerning facilities. We didn't, it was not a long meeting. We talked a little bit about how the facility committee meeting, the community meeting had gone, and then talked a little bit about the history, too. We'll probably reschedule another meeting sometime in mid-May. Will be our next meeting for that. We met with finance committee, we've talked about that. Currently, getting an RFP for the elementary windows, we're getting it out for bid, so hopefully, we'll find out more about that as we can. We have a construction meeting, I think, next week, where the construction people will come in, look at it, and then they'll put their bids together. And then, we'll have a bid opening and go from there. Netting's up on the stadium playground now. Just a reminder that the May ninth board meeting, one o'clock. So, there's a change there, so make sure you get your calendar right. State's still looking at finalizing the budget. We're anxious for it to be done. There's still a wide difference between the legislature's budget and the governor's, so we're hoping that it is closer to the governor's budget than it is the other ones, because that would provide us with additional funds. Budget this year, we're starting to work towards closing that budget out, and we're working on this seventeen-eighteen budget as we speak. We're working with principals on curriculum, negotiating with all the groups, as we've mentioned, and I guess my last piece would be, we'd sure like the state to make some decisions here.
You don't want a special session?
Is, as I get older, I appear to be getting more skeptical. It would not surprise me if they had to go into a special session.
I think it's that. Okay.